Well, everything that's allowable under that designation, whatever the designation will be. And then, site plans and traffic studies or whatever, they come as part of a specific development plan. So, why burden this with some conditions, either rezoning or not rezoning? That, you know, I like things simple.
Well, basically, the process would be the same as the condition. You would need to come forward with a commercial site plan when you're ready.
Is it, uh, is it worth hearing from the applicant?
Yes.
Mr. Yarvitz?
I'd like to sign in again.
Swear to tell the truth.
I do. Mark Yarvitz, Agent for Gustor 24 LLC. Um, I read the staff report briefly, the upgraded staff report, and a lot of the information I was going to discuss is in the staff report. The difference between the C1 and the C2 is not that much of a difference. And, um, whatever traffic would be created from a C1 zone or a C2 zone, I don't see much difference in that. And Gustor, not necessarily, but 522 or Posayo Canyon East and those roundabouts, was designed to handle sufficiently way more traffic than is currently being generated. And I don't think whatever traffic is going to be created on Gustor, whether it's C1 or C2, is going to be that much different. And the difficulty I have, which is why I'm here, is, um, I've talked to a few developers in Albuquerque, and they say they'd rather go to the dentist than develop a project in Towes because of the idiosyncrasies we have here. Um, trying to, I don't have an end user for this project. And as an eight-plus acre parcel in the, what I call, top dead center, according to Cowan and Associates, fifty percent of our population lives south of Posayo Canyon East, and fifty percent lives north. The plaza's not our center of the universe. It's really that intersection. And for an eight-and-a-half acre parcel there to not be developed as one parcel, it makes no sense to me. That's why I'm here to get this changed, um, to split it along the C1, C2. And I went to see, uh, Mr. Ramsey at the time and tried to determine where that line actually was. And if you look at other parcels, the split between C1 and C2 kind of meanders up and down the street. Was it done correctly or not when it happened? I don't know. But, uh, to have, to speak to someone who wants to bring in maybe a BLM building, I know they've been sniffing around, or somebody wants to do a new healthcare center or something, to have a parcel large enough to accommodate what they want to do with gross, growth, and to have one set of rules to follow is really important for me in trying to assist anybody who wants to bring a project to that area. And to have the split zone is just, I just, the differences aren't that great. But if you're outside of Towes and you say, "What do you mean? I have two zones and two sets of rules to deal with," it is going to be a difficulty at best. Um, I brought along, um, I brought along a copy, I don't know if it was in the original application. There was a preliminary approval from the DOT that was, was a comment made by, uh, someone here about how would the DOT approve, uh, access from Posayo del Pueblo Sur. What I have is, I'm going to hand out, it's just, it's an excerpt. Um, DOT, this is, the, the, uh, permission that they gave to enter there has expired because the gentleman, um, Mr. De Gudoi, who owns the Oylin Lou building and the rest of it, uh, when we applied for this, uh, didn't do, uh, what he said the first time. So, we got an extension, which is also since expired. The point I want to make is that nothing can happen until you go back to the Department of Transportation to reapply for your, um, for your access permit. Um, they did not deny it. They will not deny it under their code because you can't have a property that touches the road and be landlocked. They just will determine what your needs are based upon your actual usage. So, the actual usage will determine what the DOT will say. And since we don't have an actual usage, Mr. De Gudoi had a build-out plan that he was going to do. Um, they approved it. I'm, I'm going to hand this out. And what it basically shows you is, it's a thirty-six-foot wide easement that just is past that box culvert, which shows three twelve-foot lanes, right in, a right out, and a left in, which the DOT had approved but has since expired. And again, we don't have an end-user group, so when some project wants to come there, we will have to reapply to them a- as well as provide, uh, as what Ms. Perkins was referring to, is, we need to, if the zone change is done, it's done. When there's a project there, we will have to come in for a site application review regardless. It's not a double situation. It's required anyway. There's no administrative level approval for a commercial project like this, in any event. So, I just want to add this to the record, if I might, just to, so you can see what it is that was approved. And this is the letter of expiration from... Can I have a copy of the design? Yes, Commissioner, would you?
Um, maybe for the staff, Martha. While the commission's concerned about traffic in Towes, I think it's somewhat premature because we do have safeguards. Uh, we have no idea what kind of project will ultimately land on this line. And then, it will most likely require a traffic study that, that will govern the rules and, uh, improvements that will be necessary to handle whatever that specific project will generate. So, I really don't see any problem with rezoning the property, uh, because, you know, we have no idea what's going to, what kind of build and it's going to land on the line.
As an option, even if, sorry, if, let's say we don't get the rezoning, and we bring in a project that wants the entire eight acres and there's a split zone. At that point, we'd be asking either for variances on the C1 or to do a zone change at that point, which would then be contract zoning because we have a specific use, and we're trying to avoid contract zoning here. And so, to, to ask for a zone change or variances from the C1, which, the difference between the C1 and C2, you know, it's still all commercial. There's difference in building sizes and setbacks, but it doesn't change the traffic pattern or what you can do. It just makes it more difficult for me to assist an outside developer.
I think it's simple to handle it by rezoning rather than paying your own cost for variances and whatnot.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, you can do a PUD under, in the commercial zone, or is that only allowing residential? I don't know the answer. I, I don't need to know the answer. I'll look that up later. But, most likely, a project like this would probably go under a PUD so that you can have the better tools for designing. I don't know, but again, I don't have a project to present.
Commissioner Garcia, do you have a question?
Oh, a couple of things. I, I do agree with, um, Mr. Luke's. And I, I do want to avoid, as far as place subject to any site plan check, you know, approvals that we do, uh, there's a process in place. But, I'm curious to see if there's any individuals to speak on this, on this change or not.
Mr. Yarvitz, do you have anything else to add?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Do we have anybody signed up, Ms. Perkins?
Yes, of course.
Mr. Hall's here. Mr. Hall, you swear to tell the truth?
I do. I do.
Right.
Um, I don't see why, um, I think we talked, or the commission and the staff talked about a lot split. I still think that's a viable option, uh, to maintain, uh, the, uh, the differences in the two based on, um, access to different, two different types of roads. I call one of them a major arterial, I call the other, some are a collector. Um, so, I think a lot split is still a possibility. As far as Albuquerque developers, you don't only come to Towes because of idiosyncrasies, idiosyncratic, uh, planning or whatever. Um, I, maybe they should just stay in Albuquerque. That'd be a good idea. Thank you.
I expected something a little bit longer, Mr. Hall. Uh, anybody else sign up to speak? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public discussion on this. Commissioners, do you have any comments before we move on here?
I, I'm in favor of just granting rezoning.
I have a, I have a question, uh, Ms. Perkins. Um, the, the thought process that you put together, or Mr. Con, I'm sorry if it was you, um, the, the, kind of the plan that you guys derived with, uh, the applicant shall come back for a site plan approval. How does the site plan approval work right now, and what would this additional order add?
The, the only, the, it doesn't add anything. I mean, the condition is basically what Pavella's saying, that if there was a commercial site plan at this scale, it would come back to the commission. Um, what I had understood was that there was some concern though because the, the way that the current code reads is that they are combining rezoning with the site plan, which is contract zoning. So, the code needs to be changed, and that's where the problem is.
So, so, this would go for a site plan, and then it would come before this commission as well? And then, the same site plan approval would happen twice?
No, 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 no. You, right now's, uh, the request for the rezoning. So, if you decide to approve the rezoning, then the rezoning would go through, and the whole parcel would be C2. Then, when an applicant decides that they want to come in for a commercial site plan, then they would apply to us, and we would take it to the commission for approval.
And DRC first?
And DRC first, right.
But that would happen anyway.
Sure.
Yes, yes. It's just the way the code is put together. It combines the two into one, and it, we can't be, we can't be doing it as one because then that's contract zoning. So, we're trying to separate it. The problem is the code. So, we really need to do a text amendment to change the code.
And what the, the, the piece of the parcel that's facing, uh, Gustor, how much land is that? How big is that piece of land?
You mean the C1?
Yes. It's, uh, approximately, it's approximately split, uh, three-and-a-half acres in the front and five acres in the back. And the lines, where were the lines?
So, the, the bigger parcel is actually intended for a smaller use in some ways?
Yes. The bigger parcel is the C1.
Well, what I'm trying to visualize is, is what would happen in a situation here? If you left it C1 and C2, um, I understand the idea that another strip mall would come in, but, you know, I don't know if those are necessarily economically viable options, uh, in this century. Um, but, that being said, uh, if you left it C1 and C2, uh, would it be developed in a way that you would have a commercial, uh, property facing Gustor separately, and then a different commercial property then facing, uh, the main road, Posayo, on the other side? And that, to me, makes less sense than having it all unified and having one complete commercial property. Um, I know that it could be divided up again, but that would be a whole other process for Mr. Yarvitz or for Gustor 24. Um, I guess the difficulty that I'm having personally is that, uh, trying to weigh the benefits, the cost-benefit analysis of our job as the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Uh, and from a welfare perspective, it makes more sense to make it C2 in its entirety to give the best, uh, economic viability to the community, uh, which theoretically could lead to, um, even C1 projects, um, if needed, but it could also lead to the bigger ones. Um, and I don't have enough information as to whether it really affects the safety of the community. Um, you know, Mr. Yarvitz, uh, you know, pointed out that, you know, a traffic study would be required. Uh, you could speculate and make the argument that by having a business facing Gustor and then another business facing, uh, Posayo, that it actually would create more of a traffic problem rather than having one singular use on the entire eight acres. Um, those are my comments. Uh, any other commissioners have any opinions? Commissioner Lucero, do you have anything?
Yeah. I would make a motion.
Does, uh, do we want to hear from the town attorney that snuck in?
Uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I really apologize for being late. Uh, I looked down on my watch and it's about forty, and I don't know how that happened. But here I am, napping, I suppose, right? It's not what happened.
It never happened to me.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Luke, you, you say you have a motion?
I make a motion to approve case number 2014 dash seven based on findings of facts and, uh, the staff recommendation without a site plan at this time. And I would second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Lucero. Um, just to interject, Commissioner Romero just appeared. Um, you missed quite a discussion, Commissioner. Uh, we can do it one of two ways. I could summarize what we discussed, or you could abstain from the vote.
I'm abstaining from the vote, and I know.
Okay.
I need a clarifying motion.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Luke's made a motion to approve the rezoning, um, without requiring a site plan.
Uh, uh, it, it's part of the, it's part of the rezoning process. Site plan is part of the development process.
So, you don't want the site plan to come before the commission at all?
No, no.
Why don't you just say that you make a motion to approve the rezoning? Because if you say without a site plan, then that means that staff could just administratively approve the site plan without coming before you if this is read later.
Fair enough. I think that's a good point. You're trying to say, Commissioner Luke, that without the conditions that the, that the planning department put in their recommendation?
Make motion to approve the rezoning purely.
We have a resecond?
Yes, we do. Seconded again.
Okay, um, we have any further discussion from the commission? Okay, I've heard, um, voicemail, please.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, Garcia?
Garcia, please.
Yeah, sorry. You're waiting for me out, but he's...
Uh, yes.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Luke?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Uh, the motion passes four to, to zero.
Okay. Come on, uh, we're on to item seven B, uh, case number PG 2014 dash eight. Uh, this is a variance being sought for two fourteen, uh, Marada Lane. Uh, the applicant's name is Erin Dudley. Uh, would you like to give a presentation on this matter, Ms. Perkins or Mr. Con?
Either one, I can give it.
Do you want to take a stab at it, Mr. Con?
Oh, yeah, sure, okay.
Hey, can I give you guys a break? Change of hats, all right?
Yeah, um, so this one is, um, it's a request for variance for the property on two fourteen, Marada Lane. And so, um, if we can have the staff report added to the record. And for this one... So, for this one, it's a variance in the lot size. Um, it's in an R14 zone, and the lot that the property is located on is the point zero three seven acres. And the staff recommended approval.
Is it an R14 or R4?
I'm sorry.
R14.
It's R4. It's R4. It's R4.
It's R4, yeah?
Yeah, I misunderstood. It's R4.
Sure.
So, that's...
So, in addition to the lot size, uh, request for a lot size variance, um, she, the applicant is also requesting variance for all the development standards because she can't meet the setbacks and the, and the... This is kind of a crazy case in the fact that this house was built, um, before she bought it. It's transferred hands a couple of times. Um, we did quite a bit of research before she actually purchased this house. It's a duplex. Um, the setbacks are not being met. There was a previous building permit and a previous certificate of occupancy that were issued. It appears that the original building permit and certificate of occupancy may have been lost or the certificate of occupancy was given in nineteen ninety-nine. The, uh, the county assessor's office says that this, uh, duplex was built in nineteen ninety-six. So, that's why I'm saying that CO was issued in nineteen ninety-nine.
Do you know who the owner or builder was, Ms. Perkins?
Uh, no, I do not. And, you know, I worked with the title company on this. I worked with a financial institution on this. I worked with the previous, um, owner and, uh, real estate, um, broker and as well as her real estate agent. So, what's included in this packet is, uh, is a, a site plan that basically shows how the duplex is covering the lot, how she cannot meet the setbacks. Even the lot coverage is a little bit over once and while. And then, um, but what's also interesting about this is that the zoning is R4, and her neighbors, all to the north of the street, all have teeny-tiny little lots that do not, uh, that are not in adherence with R4 either. They're very small lots as well. Um, I looked at the county assessor's records again to find out when those, um, houses were built. They only had some of the, uh, house, uh, some of the dates. And those houses were built before the, um, current zoning code was in place. So, they're grandfathered in, but they didn't have all the dates. So, I don't know, you know, how those were built either. So, we kind of have an issue where the zoning doesn't really reflect what's on the ground. And, um, if you look at the map, there's actually a colored map on here that shows, um, an annex parcel that's adjacent to these lots. They're on the north side of the road, um, and also need to be zoned. So, we may want to look at this whole neighborhood and possibly talk about rezoning it so that some of these are more inconformant. The problem that we have is R14 is the residential zone with the smallest lot size. And you don't even have a residential zone that allows for lot, smaller lot sizes, of which most of these are. So, anyway, that's just more background. And, you know, finding in the application packet, uh, uh, letters from the prior planning, um, director that basically kind of gets around the fact that the town endorsed at that time that the duplex would be on that lot. So, I feel like the town has to take some responsibility here as far as requesting this variance as well.
Why, why are we looking for a variance when this is existing structure that's been there for, what, fifteen years?
Because it's non-conforming, and it was built after the zoning code went into effect in nineteen seventy-four. So, it doesn't meet the current...
I was just scared about.
How'd it come, yeah, that's nice. How did it come to your attention?
It came to my attention because they, um, well, I actually had a lot of inquiries on this piece of property, and the house did not sell for quite some time because of this problem where it didn't meet the zoning. So, by working with the financial institution and the real estate agents on both sides, I mean, we went through as many records as we could find, and we dug up as much as we could find. And given that there was a letter in the past from a planning director at that time, Alan Beehill, um, I decided that, you know, it basically was a legal non-conforming piece of property, with a duplex on it.
Yeah, with the blessing of the town, because, uh, as the town issued occupancy, right?
Right, but the problem is if this, if this duplex was burned down or somehow was destroyed, she could not rebuild it, and she wants to have that ability to do it. And I think the financial institution and the insurance company would feel much better if this property was given a variance.
I guess it...
Uh, Chairman, I, I do, I'm trying to understand if this is driven by a financial piece more so than what this commission is supposed to be looking at. I mean, it's an existing structure. It was granted way back when it did take place. Um, so, I don't understand why it would be coming to us to, to, to make some modifications to what was approved way back when. Uh, I'm just trying to understand the reasoning behind it coming to us here.
There has not been any changes since nineteen ninety-nine. So, she has not, nor the previous owners, have made any changes to the structure since nineteen ninety-nine. Um, the problem is that it's a non-conforming use in that zone. And with the financial institutions getting more and more strict, it's making it harder for this property to, you know, be sold if she wants to sell it in the future. And also, I think she supplied in, in her application that they did as an appraisal, and they looked at other houses as comps. And I think the assumption was with the appraiser, I may be wrong, but that's the way I'm reading the report, is that the appraiser, the appraisal did not make any, any adjustment for possibly this zone, I mean, this house or this duplex being a non-conforming use that's been approved kind of administratively.
Commissioner Garcia will be happy to finance it.
That's the competition with the...
Do we want to hear from your applicant?
Yes.
You don't have to say anything if you don't like.
Well...
You can keep it brief. Come on.
William from Sentinel Bank pretty much said, um...
You're gonna have, you're gonna have to wait till you get to the, to the record.
I'm so slow.
No worries.
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Erin Dudley.
And do you swear to tell the truth?
I do. It took four months to get this place, and William from Sentinel Bank owns more of it than I do because that's the financier, and they just want to make sure if, in the event of like natural disaster or it get burned down or something, that they would be able to rebuild it because it would be a very expensive parking lot for Sentinel Bank to own. So, I, uh, this is the neighbor I sent out to my neighbors.
Uh, we have all that.
Oh, you do? Okay, right. Yeah, so that is why they urged me to seek a variance. I don't, I have no intention of selling it or adding to it. It's just in the event of, you know, something horrible, that I could rebuild it without much hassle.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for applicant?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anybody else signed up to speak on this? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name for the record.
Nancy Woodward.
And, uh, do you swear to tell the truth?
I do. I just have some questions. I live across the street. And as you say, there's several non-conforming lots and buildings on that street which have been added in the last fifteen years. So, it is after things were zoned. I, I question that there was ever a building permit for this building. And to put a duplex on a lot that is so tiny, and there is a parking problem there. So, you say you don't have any records of a building permit?
We have a record of a building permit being issued in nineteen ninety-nine, which is when the final was signed up on it.
Yeah, that's not one of his builds.
That's what I think, yeah, it was based on the assessor's records.
It was built earlier than that. By giving a variance or a building permit after the fact, I think you're reboarding illegal building in the town. And it has happened, you know, too many times. Um, if it burned down to the ground, what would be allowed to be built there if any could?
Not much.
On the size of that lot?
Not much.
Well, unless they came and saw a variance, unless they saw a variance at that time.
Yeah.
And it was...
I mean, so theoretically or realistically, it should never have been built on the side. Anything should have not been built on that lot. So, um, my sympathy with the owner, but there have been three owners. She's not planning to do anything further, but there's three owners in ten years. Uh, who knows the next ten years? As I say, I don't like to reboarding people for building illegally and then asking for variances after the fact.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. And I, I think we agree as a commission that we're not trying to, um, give rewards out for, for people taking advantage of the system. Um, I think, uh, you want to say something, please?
Yes, we also have a letter that was submitted by a neighbor who wanted it read into the record. It says, "To who it may concern, I am adjoining property owner to Erin Dudley at two-one-four Mortal Lane, Towes. Who is seeking a variance for our home, which I have carefully read, her application and her letter of explanation, and hereby state with this letter that I support her request and encourage the commission to grant her a variance. It is unfortunate that this municipal failure in years past becomes the burden of a new property owner we would prefer to welcome to the town. It is also unfortunate that the Planning and Zoning Council wastes time on this matter when alternatively it could review how the historic, Kit Carson Park lost its historical overlay zoning and review all the developments since then and correct them as this is a matter with far more impact on the neighborhood. Sincerely, Catherine Jones, two-one-two Mortal Lane, Towes."
Thank you.
I make one more comment.
Sure, Ms. Woodward.
You ask who built the... You ask who built that property. The adjoining neighbor on the other side built that property, so delighted it is when you build it. Which is also a non-conforming lot.
Do you know the name of that?
Uh, I don't. I didn't, for God's sake.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Romero?
If we don't grant this variance, what...
If we don't grant this variance, what alternative does she have? I mean.
Well, she, I guess what I would understand if we didn't approve the variance, then she couldn't occupy the building.
Cruel and unusual permission.
So without the variance, she couldn't move in?
Well, there's a certificate of occupancy granted, but it was granted without proper building code confirmations. So I don't know, maybe, I guess maybe she'd have lawsuit against the town for.
Yes, there is a letter in the file from a previous planning director who basically says that, I mean, it doesn't quite say that he endorses the planning aspect of the fact that they were endorsing a CO for this duplex. To me, says that they were endorsing the duplex being on this tiny lot.
I live there.
No, I understand.
Okay, that's my home. This is it.
My question, that's right, my question was, but also if there was a CO issue, it seems like our actually couldn't act on this after the.
Commissioner Ramon, I think what we're really doing here is, I think we're essentially just cleaning up the record. I think we're gonna go with whatever was already approved.
We're legitimizing what happened in the village of Darwish and Tuvie. It was done a long time ago and no one in this room had anything to do with it. And the current owner, she had a piece of money that she can burn down without bothering anybody.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Just to follow up in those lines, I do understand and we're trying to correct something that previous committee or group approved.
The town.
The town did this. But, you know, within, and if we go through that possible approval list, we need to stake that in the minutes as well. So they understand our reason behind approving it. Because I can see other neighbors coming in and poaching us for the same type of.
Your phone.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes. Mr. Caldwell.
I wanted to just back up the comments of Commissioner Garcia in that regard. To me, this strikes me as a real slippery slope issue. I don't necessarily have a solution for it, but I know that I agree with Ms. Perkins that this currently is a non-conforming use, which doesn't mean it's a legal use. It is perfectly legal under our definition of non-conforming use because we recognize it. It's not a typical non-conforming use in the sense that it didn't exist prior to our zoning regulations that then went into effect. But I think we as the town have a very tough time arguing that it can't be continued as current. Real question is, do we have an obligation because of that as the town to allow this use to continue if it's abandoned or destroyed, which are two examples of the type of things that could happen to non-conforming use that would make it go away. Our code, as it currently reads, in fact, says that it is not the intention of the Land Use Code to encourage the survival of non-conformities. And so I want to make clear that you understand as a commission that the policy of the town is not to encourage non-conformities to continue after destruction. I'm not saying you don't have the option of granting a variance. A variance normally, when I think of a variance, I think of hardship. And I think that's the gap that may be bridged here is that there may be a recognition that there's a real hardship that wasn't brought upon this particular owner by herself that you're trying to remedy. And I think you have the means to do that through the variance procedure, but it's, I have to say, it's not ideal. And it would be my desire if you were to proceed with granting it that you condition the grant in such a way that you prevent other non-conforming uses from coming in and trying to accomplish the same thing.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. I think to address that one issue regarding other non-conforming uses, I think we've got a standard policy that we raise every once in a while at meetings that each case will be handled on an individual basis. And they stand alone and we will not, you know, develop a trend or a pattern in our rulings. And I think we've proven that in the past, in fact, in the last couple of months. Two meetings ago, I think we, there were two variances or two setbacks that were sought, two different cases. One of them we approved and the other one we didn't. And it was just based on the analysis of the commission at that time, so. Mr. Lewis, would you like to, are you making a motion or?
Well, I would, but I think we need to go to public meeting and discuss somebody else.
Okay, yeah, public session's closed.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve two thousand fourteen. That is zero eight, based on the staff recommendation, findings of task, and the fact that the applicant's reasoning for this variance is hardship. If we were not to grant this variance, a hardship, that was not caused by her.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Oh, second.
Okay, discussion from the commission. I think what I'd like to comment on before we go to vote is that I think that again, I agree with Mr. Caldwell that this was not an issue that was created by this particular applicant. I think it certainly probably creates some parking and traffic problems in that area, which is a complexity for some people and hardship for some. On the other hand, I particularly like the density in that area of neighborhood. I think it's unique and it adds a little bit more character to the community like so many other parts of the house that were formed prior to the zonings that go on. So I don't necessarily think it doesn't fit in that community. I mean, in that part of the community, I think it fits right in with the density that's already there. And so I think it's also appropriate from my standpoint as well.
I agree.
Okay, having heard no other comments from the commission, we have a vote.
Commissioner Ramon.
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Pabell. Any words?
Yes, yes, yes and yes.
Commissioner Lucero.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero.
Okay, let's move on to public hearing, item seven C, case number PZ two thousand fourteen. That's a CUP conditional use permit for a daycare at one fourteen Donia Luce. This is an applicant for the inspired bilingual early learning center owned by Rachel Westmore and Taylor Etumetji. And they're requesting the CUP for the daycare. Ms. Perkins, Ms. McCombe.
So currently Inspired Daycare is located at one twenty. They have an existing location and they're looking to expand. And so this expansion would take place at the one fourteen Donia Luce Street. And so they're in the central business district. Under this zoning, the daycare is allowed as a conditional use of why they're coming for a conditional use permit. I would like to have the staff report added to the record. There's two review criteria that need to be satisfied to have a conditional use permit. And so that's going to start on page eight. The criteria that needs to be, the code and all those kind of things are in bold. The applicant's response is in italic and then the staff response is in the regular text. The first criteria is a statement addressing the consistency or lack of consistency of the proposed special conditional or provisional use. The staff believes that it follows the goals of the master plan when it comes to promoting growth in sustainable industries, promoting small growth for local businesses. And then we have, so criteria two is satisfied, or criteria one, I'm sorry. Criteria two is a statement setting out the benefits or the detriment that that proposed special or conditional provisional use would have concerning public health, safety, and welfare. And so the applicant gave a brief description of the potential disturbances. Their hours of operation are typically from seven thirty a.m. to five forty p.m. They have a parking plan. Their number of employees are listed. Signage would go through the normal sign process that staff would review. And so we also feel that criteria two has been satisfied. And so staff's recommendation is approval.
Thank you.
Is it called bike shop?
Yes.
Would the applicant like to speak for applicants?
I'm sure. Sure.
Question first then, isn't licensing required?
Yes, and they are fulfilling all the licensing requirements that the state.
I'm Rachel Letmore.
I'm sorry to say your name.
That's okay.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do. So, yeah, we are really excited about bringing additional spots into town for young children. Sorry. We serve children six weeks through four years currently. And we were just, we just actually found out yesterday that we were given a grant through the state of New Mexico to offer a pre-k program, which is state-funded, it's a free halfway program for four-year-olds. We're also the only bilingual center in town currently. And so we're just very excited about our growth and feel like we're offering a really great program to the community and that we're really preparing children for all the language programs that are being implemented in the elementary schools. And it seems that, yeah, just the sort of, the, let's try to express it, but the only also having an early learning center in the center of town and making children really visible in the community and children's work is really important to us. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? No? Does anybody in the public like to speak on this applicant? I believe ladies first.
Okay. He raised his hand for.
Okay. How are we going to do?
I don't know if we're ready yet.
Thank you.
My name is Cecilia Griffin.
And you swear to tell the truth?
Pardon me?
And do you swear to tell the truth?
Oh, I do. I live right next door to where they're planning on having the daycare. And at my age, I'm not that thrilled about it. But I'm concerned about what kind of noise I'm gonna be getting. I mean, how long will the children be outside? And the traffic? Where will the parents be dropping them off and then picking them up? Will they be on Donia Luce or on Padre Lane?
Well, you have the big parking lot in the front too.
They're gonna put a fence there in the front. That won't be the parking.
The municipal parking?
Oh, okay.
You guys are talking about two parking lots.
Yeah.
Yeah, the municipal parking, so there's plenty of parking and parents can walk the kids from that.
Oh, they'll walk the kids from there.
I would assume so.
So your questions just again are the times, the where are people gonna pick up and drop off? And the noise? Okay, we're gonna let the applicant address that. Is that, do you have any other questions?
And what kind of recesses are they gonna have?
Okay. Is there any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to address this? Okay, good idea. That's a good idea. We're gonna wait. I'm gonna hear the other public members, yes, or you?
No, they're.
You're the only, yeah. Do we state your name for the record?
My name is John Walker. I'm from Denver and I'm usually quite truthful.
How about today?
I'm one of the owners of Los Cacitas condominiums, which is on Padre Lane. And my grandchildren go to a multilingual school. I like that idea. I think our only concern, I don't think any of us have ever been informed about this. We've only heard about it a little bit bleak, is traffic on Padre Lane. It's one-way, it's narrow. And I hope that access is not blocked throughout the day. Obviously, parents have to safely bring children to school. I hope that nobody takes away the minimal parking that's already there on Padre Lane. It's already fairly crowded. And I would like if you could send a copy to Bill Jensen so we can kind of scope it out a little bit to find out more about the project before you okay it.
Okay.
That's all.
Ms. Perkins, was there a requirement of sending out notices to the existing neighborhood?
Yes, we send out, we have the applicant get a list of property owners within a ten to two hundred foot radius. Our concern is that these property owners, the database, we're not convinced it's up to date. So if we miss some adjacent property owners, we do apologize. But we have been discussing this because it seems like that we're hearing that the adjacent property owners are not getting noticed and that is not our intent.
We can check on the map because we actually have a map in the application showing like the boundary of what the three hundred foot.
Do you know if a notice was sent to Mr. Jensen, is Mr. Walker requested?
I can, I'm checking. I don't see a moment.
That's why we also post the property too in this case. We did post the property and we did put a legal ad in the paper.
Right. I'd like to hear from the applicant. That's all right. There's quite more. So to summarize, there were four issues brought up by Ms. Griffin, or Griffin? Griffin? And there was one issue, then another issue by Mr. Walker. The times of your occupation of the school by the students, by the kids. Then there was the noise issue, the pickup, drop-off, the recesses. And then to Mr. Walker, it was regarding the blocking of parking on Padre Martinez. So if you'd like to address it.
Yes, and I apologize, I did send notices to the, all of the property owners that were on the list. And so I'm very sorry that you didn't receive one.
I did get one.
Oh, you did? Okay, okay, okay. So that's a good thing. So the hours of operation, seven thirty to five thirty, generally, I think I'll just start with traffic since parents arrive. Parents tend to drop off their children anywhere between about eight o'clock and nine thirty, just depending on their own needs. The children are not all there from seven thirty to five thirty. That's just when we're open, so staff arrives at seven thirty. You know, in the location that we have across the street, it certainly hasn't, we've never had more than a few cars at a time. People really trickle in and they also trickle in to pick up their children in the afternoon anywhere between about three or three thirty when the school's let out because a lot of the children have older siblings, you know, and then some of them are there at the end between five and five thirty. But it's a process and so there is not a rush of traffic down any lane or street at any particular time during the day. There's a busier time in that morning window and then a busier time in the afternoon when people are picking up. But like I said, across the street, it's really, we have five spots there and we use the public lot as overflow parking and it hasn't been an issue. We've been in operation for almost a year. And those five spots usually accommodate the parents that are dropping off or picking up and occasionally one. and occasionally one or two people will park across the street. Where do you wanna come to?
Yeah, I just wanna... Also, we wanted to...
Do you, do you say your name?
I do.
Your name is?
Taylor Archamendi, sorry. We also wanted to let you know that the Padre Martinez will not, is it Padre Martinez? Not be used by parents at all. Padre Martinez will be, we, our staff will park back there, but there will be no traffic from parents at all down that road. They'll just use the public lot, drop off and pick them up across the lane.
And then as for the noise...
Can I ask a question regarding the staff parking in the act? How many staff members do you have and how many parking spaces are available behind buildings?
There's four staff for that facility and there are six parking spaces, potentially more. Honestly, if we measured it off a little bit more carefully, we thought six would be sufficient. So that's what we measured for. Yeah.
Well, it looks, of course, it looks like to me on the plan, your fence play area is taking up all the spaces down there.
It's, it's up to the parking...
Right, it's the rear.
Right, so there's a paved parking lot to the rear of the building on its Padre Martinez, right? And then the lot, which is denoted as the gravel lot, I believe, on the site plot is what will be a little plenty area in the front, which will address in a moment on Dona Luz, on the east side of the building.
Ms. Perkins, the requirements for parking in that commercial zone, they're gonna take up all parking in the front of that building. What is the requirement for parking there? And why are they using the public parking as part of their parking requirements?
It's in the code under the historical overlay in the commercial business district. It says that you do not have to provide additional parking for the uses that are, for the buildings that are there in that zone. And they need to have a little bit of an area for the children and they need to fence it off. That's for the state requirements for having a daycare.
Okay, thank you.
So in terms of the ways or the recess or the outdoor time, the plan is for the outdoor space to be used by six children at a time. And they're little children, they're not big rambunctious ones.
The age of the children at that center is six weeks through age two. So they're, they're quiet and they'll be inside for most of the time. And when we do take them out, there will be six at a time. And a lot of the time, we go, we take them in the buggies and we go to the park or we go across the street to the other player.
One more question.
We don't have...
Question else have? Why haven't you considered putting your player here in the back and using the parking in front out of there?
Because there's power lines in the back that crisscross the lot and it's not, it doesn't need licensing requirements to build a playground under the power lines.
We did. Children, we did. Yeah, the children can't be underneath the power line.
So it wouldn't have provided for a quality situation.
Okay, thank you. One second. There's, I think they get a couple of other issues that they're gonna address and then we'll get back to you guys, okay?
So...
So you wanna talk about the, again, one of the times, your recesses, when they, you said they just kinda go off and on throughout the day?
Right, well, what happens with children that age is that, you know, especially with the really young ones, is that they adapt on their own schedule. And so, you know, basically, it would just, it would be throughout the day, but probably, you know, at some point mid-morning and then again at some point mid-afternoon. But we don't have a set recess time because it's very dependent on when the children are awake and ready to go outside. It's also weather dependent.
How many, if you guys are to max capacity, what's your anticipated number?
Our licensed max capacity would be twenty-five, but we don't intend to have that many. So I would say that our max would probably be eighteen to twenty for that space. And six at a time on the playground.
I guess we need to hear back from the, Mr. Walker's on the edge of the seat. I'm gonna go ahead.
Well, I can't speak for everybody, but I suspect none of us are really against the idea of a bilingual daycare center. Our only concern is that it is on our side of the Padre Lane, it's very narrow, and we hope that it doesn't get congested and that you work with us if there's any problems. But from our standpoint, I don't think there's any objection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker, do you feel comfortable if there's a parking issue on Padre Martinez or a lock issue?
I don't know if there's a parking issue.
Related to these particular applicants?
I hope it doesn't get much worse, let's put it that way.
But you think, you feel comfortable working, working with them?
I suspect we can work with them. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Griffin?
We're, I was just, we're happy to work with you as well. If you are contacted.
Ms. Griffin, you're gonna have to come to the microphone. Sorry.
So I just need to make this in my mind clear. In other words, the parents will not be dropping the children off on Dona Luz.
No, not.
Okay. Okay.
And we will be happy to work with you as well.
Okay, that sounds good.
Is there anybody else in the, in the public that could speak on this particular applicant?
So thank you for it.
You guys are all kind of addressing everything together, is that right?
Yeah, we're handling it.
Okay. Great. Okay, I would go ahead and close the public meeting and then hear from the commission. Any discussion before we have a motion? Okay, having heard none, we have a motion from the commission.
I'll make another motion. Motion to approve case number two thousand fourteen dash twelve for conditional use permit for daycare based on the findings of facts and recommendation of the staff with the stipulation that any traffic, parental traffic on Padre Lane will be discouraged by the applicant.
It comes out on Dona Luz.
On Dona Luz.
So is that a stipulation that traffic on Dona Luz and Padre Martinez would be discouraged?
I don't think you can really discourage Dona Luz. Padre Martinez may be more appropriate than Dona Luz.
Yeah, I mean, Dona Luz is not gonna happen.
Oh, just to clarify, we're in the middle of a motion presentation, so before we have any discussion on it, the motion needs to be completed, the second needs to occur. Well, let's clarify, Mr. Commissioner Luks' motion.
Motion to approve two thousand fourteen dash twelve based on findings of facts and staff recommendations with the stipulation that traffic will be discouraged on Padre Martinez and to the extent that you can on Dona Luz.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Commissioner Ramirez, a second. So we move forward to discussion.
I just wanna make a statement or comment.
Sure.
Pavel, you're great in these motions. We always like you to lead and so forth. But I would like us to not put so many stipulations or, I mean, we had a discussion. We, we heard from the public and they want to discourage certain traffic in certain roads or whatever. For any issue, not only this one. But for us to put it within the motion, it's kinda, puts it too restrictive, I think. That's just my opinion. It's a statement, I'm fine with that and we can go forward with it, but I'm just...
I hear what you're saying, but I think it's not, it's not a motion that will, where the conditional use permit will contain language that they have to have a cop or somebody directing traffic if the applicant merely advises parents to honor those, those wishes. That's all. Not that you'll have somebody there with a tongue chasing parents.
And I understand the merit, it's just, you know...
And to address different, you know, concerns.
Okay, any other comments from the commissioners?
I just have to say that I agree with Commissioner Garcia that we need to probably stay away from those requirements of trying than it, Dona Luz and Padre Martinez. This is almost impossible for a business to try to tell people not to go through there. I mean, it's, it's a public road, that's gonna happen. And I'm sure that they would be working with the parents to try to keep that down anyway. So perhaps I would suggest that we just approve it and do away with those requirements.
Could I ask applicants, how do they feel about it? The language? Yeah. This was not to put my research and down here, this was merely to address the concerns of the neighbors.
That makes total sense to me. I understand it's not our intention to create a traffic problem. And we will, you know, in our current handbook for our location, we have policy and procedure for drop-off and pickup and it will be the same for the new location and so those issues will be addressed. So it's up to you to decide.
I personally feel comfortable with your assurances, so I would gladly take it out and change, change my motion.
Thank you. Here's what I think. I mean, I think that, yes, stipulations for this or that are discouraged, but I think in this particular case, it's a non-binding thing anyway. It's just a, it's just a kind of a good faith effort by the applicant to show that they really wanna make sure that these neighbors of theirs are happy and that they're gonna do everything they can. You know, there's not gonna be something, you know, that's gonna be provable one way or another that they're not discouraging it unless they just go through a proactive, you know, attempt to not discourage it. So I just think it's a good faith effort and I think that the motion's fine and the statements.
And if you have, if you have problems, call Martha.
We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion from the commission? Okay, having heard none, let's, we'll call a vote, please.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Luks?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Motion passes by Lucero.
All right, we're moving right along. There's no matters from staff. Thank you for coming, everyone. So I guess we're gonna move on from that unless you have anything to add. Did any matters come up while we were speaking? Okay. Mr. Caldwell, do you have anything to add? From matters from staff? All right, let's go on to item nine A, the Jake Brake Ordinance. Who's the business?
Okay, so this is a request from Commissioner Luks. We actually had a historic preservation commission meeting after the planning of the mission meeting last month. And we talked about the Jake braking along, especially because they're a suburb sewer where that's...
Anorte.
Anorte. Right, I keep thinking of that street as one street. And Taos San and the other adobe culturally significant buildings within downtown Taos and how that creates a lot of noise and vibration. And we're concerned about the buildings being downtown. So it suggested that we actually have a Jake Brake Ordinance. And so Amy graciously found two examples, two ordinances that are currently being used in other municipalities or counties.
Okay, so has the town attorney added the applicant, reviews the ordinance or the examples of ordinances?
No, because they are merely examples. Commissioner Luks had asked to bring it up and have the commission discuss it. This is just, you know, sort of to give you an example of what other communities have done to address the issue.
Yeah, Santa Fe has one, you would question. Maybe you mustn't go on, she's a shocked one.
I thought we had one year of self-defense.
No. Seems like we're behind the times.
We tried, we tried once, but we got shot by the old council.
Is there one, I mean, is there one that's more binding on the, on the person driving the vehicle than another?
No, we have to fold it into our current code as far as, you know, what defines would be how we would enforce it. And I looked at both of these, they were pretty much the same. I mean, so we would tweak it, we'd bring you code for you to look at. We'd have to advertise this as an ordinance.
I think this is a pretty brief discussion. I think it's longstanding, obvious that we need a, we need an ordinance like this. So I think it's just up to you guys to put one together that you think is correct and then let us editor modify it if we think needed and we'll get it approved.
Okay.
Yeah, I feel all the commissioners are supporting this, huh?
Uh, yeah, I just, just had legal counsel review it, whatever's possible.
Yeah, so just bring us some, extract the best features of your ordinances like Santa Fe.
Especially with fines and who, how would they be administered and...
That would probably end up being a traffic violation typically by law enforcement. That's the way I would see it.
Okay, then what, what do you need us to do to make a motion to direct you or just, what do we do?
I don't think there's anything.
Just ask.
I think it basically directed staff to write a margin, track ordinance and then get to where you're needing to.
Right.
Okay, I think that, that issue is addressed. Any other parts of that issue?
I have one, one of the items I'd like to bring up.
It's too late. You have an option to amend the agenda at item number four. Go ahead.
Just because I'm, I'm figuring. I've always felt that we should address the issue of boom boxes in Taos. Historically, I've been told, oh, we have a noise ordinance on the books, blah, blah, blah. But I don't think the noise ordinance is totally meaningless. Doesn't do anything, doesn't call for any enforcement, no enforcement is provided. And I think there is nothing more obscene, monstrous than a car that vibrates down the road and vibrates everything within three hundred yards. I think it's pollution, I think it's invasive. And I don't think it does anything for welfare of this community or its visitors. So I don't know if there's a way to address that issue specifically, boom box ordinance, aside from the noise ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lucas, I'm sure there is a way. You know, I think it would beg several questions like enforcement, enforcement period and enforceability. But it certainly sounds like it would look into it, like...
I would like that, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about this.
As long as it doesn't go towards motorcycles and stuff.
Hardest of...
Actually, I used, back in the day, I used to have a truck that probably would have upset you very much.
I'm all for it for the music, you know, but keep it for whatever music you like. But keep it to yourself, don't, don't push it on to fifty other people.
But I know that with the boombox issue, a lot of cities tried it. I mean, just short of a police officer there with a decimal meter and everything.
I'd say just shoot.
The boombox.
I, you know, I think it's just been one of those that's told, by the time they get there, you know, it's been shut down. I used to have a truck that had over a hundred speakers in it. That used to be used for that type of competition. And when we'd see...
I'm surprised we're hearing this.
We'd see that drive our way with the remotes and shut it down and there was no crew running it.
All my citizens, citizens are arrested. Well, I would just bring it up if there's some, some means of oppressing you, right, not, will suffer out.
As long as there's a provision in there that you will not target motorcycles and love bikes at that point, I'll get behind you on this. As long as there's a provision in there that you will not target motorcycles and loud pipes at that point, I'm looking behind you on this.
I think I, I'll tell my attorney to hear you about it.
Okay, anything else from the commission? With motion to adjourn?
Do the head. I like motion.
Okay. All's a favor, signify by eye?
Uh, no.
Okay, uh, we have one no and the majority carries.
Just means it's better.
I got one, you know, we're not on record. My name isn't Benny. I missed some of the documents and the ones I want, I just told him I wasn't ready.
I'm sorry, you are now.
Is there any in Maryland, Tom?
Probably.
Sorry, August, we copied the same thing over and over again.
I was, I was gonna say something the last time.
Do you want to?
I'm gonna come and look.